My name is Dodd Walker. I'm a candidate for school board in District One, which is over at Waukulla Station. I grew up there. And, um, really, what I want to get across is that, one, there's a little group of people that, I don't even know them, they decided they don't like me. But that's life of a school principal, that every decision you make, someone doesn't like it. And that's just the way it is. I knew that going into the job. So, I don't, but I don't know these people, and apparently they know me, or know somebody who does know me. And, but I just want to say that their rub against me is that I don't like parents having a voice in education. Well, nothing could be further from the truth. Any school principal, or teacher for that matter, but especially school principal knows that they won't be in the job long if they don't have support from the parents. And I always had support from my parents. Because I do, I did care about what they said, I still care about what they say, and, because that is the only way a child is going to learn, is by having support from the parent for education in general, but the teachers that the child has. If they're bad mouthing the teacher, that child's never going to learn anything, you're not helping that child to do anything. So, so now, I want to get that across, because that has become an issue from somewhere. I am passionate about the welfare of kids in Waukulla County. And I have been since I was a, my very first job was a referee at the rec park for little Peewee football games. And I did that when I was a senior in high school. And I just enjoyed working with those kids so much. I knew that eventually I was going to find my way to working with them more. Started out life in the criminal justice system, or as a criminology major, and worked at a school for emotionally handicapped kids. I thought that was the direction I was going to go, was kind of like the, you know, juvenile detention center administrator, something like that. But I got pulled into education.
Thirty seconds.
Left, or?
Left.
Okay. I got pulled into education and never looked back. And I love Waukulla County schools, that's why I'm running for school board, because I want to see it maintain the same reputation it's had around the state. I want to see that continue, it'd break my heart for that not to happen. So I'm going to get in here and do everything I can to keep it where it's at. And that means listening to what needs to be changed, because I know this place needs to be changed, or always is. And I would appreciate your support. If anyone wants to talk to me, my phone number is readily available. And, um, appreciate it, thank you very much.
I'm Eddie Hand, I'm running for District One School Board, like Mr. Walker said. We, uh, you know, I was thinking about what I was going to say on the way up here, because I'm not appointed to plan a speech, or nothing of that nature, but, you know, one thing I'm not is not a politician. I don't play one on TV, I don't, I just stay on holiday and whatever cliche you want to say. But, um, one thing I am is a parent. And, you know, I, I, I want to talk about a recent event that I saw while attending a school board meeting. And a parent got up and talked, was sort of shoved away by the school board, and the two teachers got up and talked, and they were by, oh, you know, we support you, we support you, but the teachers were like, no they don't, no they don't. So, and they were sort of pushed away. So, in that moment, I realized why I'm doing what I'm doing. I, part of me along this journey has questioned, why are you running for school board? One, you're not from Waukulla County, nobody knows you. Well, the primaries proved different. Um, and I love Waukulla County, I've got three school-aged children, fourth, second, and first grade, got a two-year-old at home, going to be in Waukulla County schools. We're, I'm here. I've been here for ten years. Saturday, I'll come first, I've been here for ten years. Yes, you know, you can call me an in-plan all day long, that's fine, you know, I'll take that, I'll put, I'll, I'll take that with a smile on my face. But I appreciate your support, you know, I'm not going to change me, I'm, I am who I am. And I love our schools, I love our teachers, and, you know, my kids, they've had some amazing teachers in the school system, but I think if you give me an opportunity, we can make it even that much better. I appreciate your support, thank you.
Eddie, do you want to go?
Yeah.
Eddie Evans, I'm a candidate for county judge.
Give us five.
Three.
Three.
I tried.
You did.
Um, good evening, I'm Eddie Evans, I'm running for county judge here, Waukulla. And, um, a little bit about my background, I was, I grew up, born and raised, grew up in Sopchopy. Went to Sopchopy Elementary, when we started our elementary school in Sopchopy, went to the high school, we didn't have a middle school at the time, and went to FSU undergraduate and law school. Went to work with the state, actually interned with the state attorney's office by, while I was in law school. I interned here in Waukulla and Franklin, we had to cover both those days. And then I went to work with the state attorney's office after I graduated, and have been there for the past thirty years. During that time, I've served both, I came back and handled county court in Waukulla and in Franklin for a while, then went off to Gadsden County, came back as the head prosecutor here in Waukulla County for a couple of years. We used to have about a two, three-year rotation. I rotated out and went to Leon. Once in Leon, they sort of discovered I had a knack for the law, I took over as, um, as their special projects type person. I had the special investigations, candidate members on down to more minor crimes. The one distinction I have with the thirty years, I've handled death penalty cases, I currently handle death penalty cases and ones on death row for our, for our hurdle circuit. But as general counsel, I have a lot of experience dealing with civil cases, because we do have to deal with civil matters. Today, um, today I had to review some materials for half a billion dollar bond project that's integrated and put on by an agency, so I had to deal with that. Had to deal with public records requests, deal with the civil suit. I was in mediation yesterday, I missed a meeting, a campaign type thing meeting yesterday, simply because I had to spend, I was mediation that went long. And it was on a civil case where our office is being sued. So, I had to deal with that, so I have both the criminal experience of the past thirty years, as well as the civil experience, experience of the past thirty years. And I really would like to put that to work as your county judge. County judges handle both civil and criminal. And over those periods of years, I simply asked the question, were you in better position to evaluate people and cases whenever you were twenty-five years old or thirty-five years old versus whenever you're fifty-five or sixty years old? Your life experiences matter, I believe I have the life experience as well as professional experience that is needed for this position. And I think that sort of distinguishes, distinguishes us when you start looking at candidates in this case. So, I would appreciate your vote, thank you.
Brian Miller, candidate for county judge.
Good afternoon, my name is Brian Miller, and I'm currently your chief prosecutor here in Waukulla County. I've served in that position for the past six years. So, a little bit about me, I didn't actually grow up here in Waukulla County, I'm from Tallahassee in Leon County, obviously. But my family is from here in Waukulla. My mom is Janice Brown from Sopchopy, she went to Sopchopy High School and graduated in nineteen sixty-five. She's a Brown and Davis from Protus Mill. I actually married Kelly Langston, who's here tonight, she's a Langston from Smith Creek. So even though I didn't grow up here in Waukulla County, my roots here are very, very deep. Together we have one daughter, she's three and a half, and she'll be the seventh generation to live here in Waukulla County. So I'm very deeply rooted to what our past is here in Waukulla. But like I said, I didn't grow up here, I moved here five years to get it back in two thousand seventeen with a lot of our other newer residents. So I feel like I'm in the best position to represent everybody. The families that have been here for a very long time, and the people that have just joined us recently, I can represent both of those as your county judge, as I have as your county prosecutor. I went to Leon High School, graduated in two thousand, and then I went to four-state university, both for undergraduate and then again for law school. I graduated the top ten percent of my law school class, and was elected to something called Order the Coif, it's a honor reserved for the very top percentage of law school students. I actually started off on the other side, though, not the state attorney's office, but my first uncertainty was at the public defender's office over in Nassau County, just north of Jacksonville. Also interned at a large multi-state litigation law firm, Marshall Dennehy, in Jacksonville as well. So I've seen the defense side, I've seen the large multi-state civil side, and I chose to be a prosecutor because of the impact that it had on communities.
You're fine.
That's something else? Okay.
It's a phone, can't silence everything.
So, as I said, for the past six years, I've been your prosecutor here every single day, day in, day out, seeing what's happening in our community, trying to make this a better place to live. So I'm very much dedicated to our present here in Waukulla County. And as I said, my wife and I have a three-year-old daughter that was going to be going to Waukulla County schools, we're going to live here for the rest of our lives. So I'm really deeply committed to our future here in Waukulla County. I believe that puts me in the best position, that as our county grows, and I'm sure you're all going to get questions pretty soon about the growth of our county, as our county grows, y'all should have a judge that will grow along with it. Okay, I've been an attorney for ten years now, it's not like I'm fresh out of law school. I can serve this county well to our future, and I appreciate y'all's vote so I can do exactly that. Thank you very much.
So, work there, okay. Okay, we're missing one.
That means we can share a mic and they can share a mic?
Well, I need a mic, too.
Oh, that's what we do.
I can talk loud.
Well, we can, we can, uh, pass, pass my phones around, um, we'll be blessed, and, at any rate, we'll start and just go straight down from the first, which is just introduce yourself, and talk about your.
You want to sustain?
It's up to you, you can sit if you want.
Hello, everyone, thank you, Mr. Snowden, for putting this on for us. Uh, my name's Fred Nichols, uh, I'm coming from about five generations of Waukulla County. Retired from the Waukulla County Sheriff's Office, married to my beautiful wife, Ainsley, that's out there. Have four children, uh, have a grandchild now in the community, and, uh, I just deeply care about Waukulla County. I've served, like I say, for the past twenty-something years in Waukulla County, and I, uh, just would appreciate everything that, uh, I can do.
Hey, good evening, I'm John Pointon, candidate for the county commission. I live in District Two, of course, you have to tell everybody, you've got to run countywide, you've got to go everywhere and see everybody, and I've been trying to do my share of that. I, I started out a long time ago as a farm boy in Tennessee, and learned how to work there, ended up in the automobile business for quite a number of years, learned how to work there as well, but worked with people a lot more, to identify problems, to figure out how to satisfy customers, and to see that they got what they wanted for what they were paying. At some point, I ended up, I started out working on cars, and when I got done with that, I was, I was running a car dealership. And it wasn't long after that, the Lord identified me as somebody that he could use in churches. Now, I'm not exactly sure how all that happened, but one day I'm running a car dealership, and it's not that much longer, and I'm, I'm serving two churches in rural Carroll County, Tennessee. And the next thing you know, I had three churches. And, and what I'm trying to say is, that I've had a whole lifetime of working and solving problems, and serving people's needs at whatever level I've been in. When I was on the farm, we, we sold to anybody and everybody, if they were hungry, they got something to eat. When I was in automobile business, the same way, you, you just, you serve everybody when they come to you, and you do the best you can do. And when I got into ministry, it was even more stringent, that you, that you receive everybody that comes to you, that there's no, there's no forms to fill out, there's, it's no walls between you and them, and I learned how to be very able, just to take care of everybody that comes without, I guess without prejudice would be one word, but without bias, without, without any thoughts about it. So I think that I, that my life has been a continuation of service, and I really feel like that I'm ready to serve y'all, the people in Waukulla County.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's right, I, I, we followed our children down here in 'oh-seven, how much time ago?
Uh, fifty-four seconds.
Okay, well, so we followed our children down here in two thousand and seven. Uh, my son got married that year, and he, he came to Florida State to work on another degree, we won't get into that. And we started coming down here, and the first thing they did was carry us to Waukulla County to show us things that were going on down here. And we saw the Springs, we saw St. Mark's, we went to some of the restaurants, and, yeah, we're both enchanted, we'd never had traveled to this part of the state. And so we kept coming down here, and eventually they had a grandchild, and figured out we might as well live here, because we were coming here all the time. And so in fourteen, I got an opportunity to serve the Sopchopy Methodist Church, and the one down in the Clocky Bay, and we moved down here and lived in Sopchopy the past eight years. And I was able to retire in June, and apparently I needed a lot more to do, so I'm here in front of y'all today, and I appreciate the confidence that most people have, have given me, as I go around and talk to you, I just appreciate the encouragement. Thank you.
Perfect.
All right, my name is Sammy McGrew, I am a fifth generation here in Waukulla County, and I'm raising a sixth generation. Born and raised, Waukulla, Waukulla kid, went to Waukulla High School. At Waukulla High School, I received an athletic scholarship, played for four-state seminoles. I served under the, uh, head coach Bobby Bowden. I learned a lot from that guy, he's, he's absolutely amazing. After that, I went to a preseason at Miami Dolphins, uh, from there, I left that, and I went overseas. I actually lived in Amsterdam for a while. After that was said and done, I was, after going from Miami, from Waukulla to Miami to Amsterdam, it was, it was a breeze coming back home. I, I, I love Waukulla, I love our community, I believe we have something great here. My dad, in his younger days, he actually created a juke joint here in Waukulla County. Uh, I took that juke joint, when I got back, and I renovated, turned it into a childcare center. I, I, I made a promise to make sure that the childcare center stayed affordable for the people here in Waukulla County. After that, we started doing camps for the youth. I, I stayed, I, I stayed in the face of the youth all the time. Lately after that, later after that, I ended up creating a nonprofit organization, youth athletic nonprofit organization, and been operating that for three or four years. It's a blessing to finally see the fruits of my labor for my own son and three other guys to receive Division One athletic scholarships. So, that's what I do, I love my community, I love the people that are here. The people here are amazing, we have strong values, strong family values, and I love being part of the community. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Quincy Messer Smith, and I, um, am not five, six, or seven generations from Waukulla County, but I've lived here an awfully long time. Um, I am the current chair of the Waukulla County Commission, and in two thousand and eighteen, I simply ran on being accessible and involved, that's exactly what I'm running on now. I work tirelessly, and it is with great reward. Um, my involvement with my civic church and service organizations have not changed since being elected to the commission, and I have been successful with regard in my counterparts on the county commission, um, to a lot of wonderful things that are going on here, and I look forward to your support and your vote. Thank you.
And we're, we're going to two-minute responses on these questions.
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
You say it goes here, there?
Go that way. That one. Just, that seems easiest, just to keep going.
Let me back up, because it's like dealing with radio, so John's going, then Sam's going, then I'm going, then Fred's going?
Yes.
Got it.
Yes.
It's a relay, you got to run it back. Exactly. We got it.
Okay, um, I think I'll skip around, this was a submitted question, uh, impact fees ended ten or twelve years ago, what, what is your, your stance on impact fees?
Well, that's one of the things that I'm most passionate about in this election, other than the people that I get a chance to serve, of course, but I think one of the processes would be to get impact fees back in, in the picture of fund collection here for the county. They tell me when you're working on county budget, that you need as many buckets to get money out of as you can. And they, and there's, there's not enough of them, a lot of times when you get to stretching things. And I know that the last time, as, as far as I know, the last time we collected impact fees was around two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. In those two years alone, we collected around two-point-six million dollars worth of impact fees. And we spent the last ten years not collecting any of those. And we've, and we're in a county that's, that's growing quite a bit, most everybody I talk to has some opinion about the growth, concern, et cetera. And one of the ways, one of the concerns is how do we, you know, continue to pay for the needed services of more people coming here? And I know impact fees are designed to address that. And, and I think we really, we really need to collect them, that's an opportunity for the county to have more freedom to do the things that we all want to have here. We want expansion of our parks and recs, our library, we want to make sure that we have enough EMS and sheriff's department, and impact fees, transportation as far as roads, and impact fees are, are designed, set up by county to address these issues, to keep the pressure off of the property tax, keep the pressure off the public service tax, to, to give us opportunities not to have to raise taxes every time, every time it comes around. We, we might not necessarily have to raise it if we had this other bucket of money. So I think it's very important that we go back to collecting it, and I'm really not sure why we aren't, but I think it's time we, we went back to that. Thank you.
So, um, I'm kind of with John on that, so I truly believe we do need impact fees. The reason being is simple, because as I'm looking at our different services that we offer, infrastructures that we have in place, they could use those impact fees, the funds collected for the impact fees. Excuse me. Sorry.
I, I paused it, go ahead, and we'll collect yourself and begin again, okay?
Yes, yes. So, so with the impact fees, I see, especially from the community as well, that people is concerned about growth. And a lot of people don't believe that these developers are actually paying their way or assisting in the services that we have. And that is one of the ways that developers can assist, or, or the people moving in can assist, is with impact fees. Those things are necessary to help, to help us with our services, our parks and recs, our EMS and everything else, but, but the biggest thing is, I believe, is that the impact fees, especially for our library, can actually help increase that infrastructure.
All right, sounds good.
Um, impact fees, boy, those are two words that everybody wants to hear about. So here is my stance on impact fees, based on knowledge and based on a lot of homework. Uh, we do have an ordinance on the book for impact fees, that is set to zero percent. I definitely feel like there is a misconception with regard to what they can be used for, that takes a lot of homework to figure that out, and I also have the faith in the county commission that when we need to bring impact fees back, then they will do that. Thank you.
Is that right? Yeah. That's good.
Well, I'm going to start out by saying that there's still money in the impact fee account with the county. Uh, I dug and did a lot of research on this, I'm not a fan of impact fees, they're, right now, as a rural county, which is, Waukulla County is a rural county, is very restrictive, there's a Florida statute that covers it. So whatever the percentage of growth is, is what the percentage you can use of an impact fee. In order for us to even bring back an impact fee into the county, you've got a seventy-to-a-hundred-thousand-dollar impact fee study, so you're starting off in the red. So, as I've done my due diligence and my research on it, the, the impact fees, they sound great, and they would be if we met the, the Florida statute, the amount of population that it would be, for, to allow us to spend it the way we want to. But at this very time, there is still money from those impact fees in the county budget that they can't use, they can only use a very small percentage. And also, you can only use impact fee money in the area of the growth, in the area of the growth. So no other part of the county, other than Crawfordville, would get to use that money, but it's very restrictive based on Florida statute. Thank you.
Same. Same. It goes to Sam. Here's, here's another submitted question, uh, we, Waukulla County has had a lot of residential growth, there's been some commercial growth, what would you do to bring industry into Waukulla County to create jobs?
Okay, what would I do to bring industry into Waukulla County to create jobs? So first is identifying, well, me myself, right, so, um, being on the side of business, one thing that I always see is there are, there are new businesses being created today. The state of Florida, when it comes to corporations, are, we are becoming as competitive as, let's say Delaware, which a lot of corporations typically, uh, run to when they are, begin to incorporate. So here in Florida, um, it is, it is, it's a valuable asset for any company to have. So, if we was to reach out, and, and this is me, if we reach out to these different companies as startup, um, as a startup which is typically found through startup facilitators and incubators, and we approach these companies before they begin to incorporate, and show them what we have to offer here, we have a valuable workforce, people in our community, if you look around at other major cities, we don't have many, many people, but education-wise, we have the people. These cities actually charge more, as far as labor is, they're looking for more money, more wages. And I would like to say that is slightly, maybe three or four more dollars higher than we are. So to attract these different companies really is to, uh, is reach out to them before they actually get up and get going. Thank you.
Will you repeat the question, please, sir? Yeah, you, not Sam.
Okay, uh, Waukulla County has had a lot of growth, there's been a lot of residential growth, there's been some commercial growth. The question is, for industry to bring jobs, um, what would you do to attract industry?
Thank you. So here in Waukulla County, we have a zone that's called the industrial zone, it's on the other side of the bridge in Medar, so, um, to bring people here, we have an EDC that works day and night tirelessly with regard to bringing businesses to opportunity park. But also with bringing industry here, did you ask something about growth in that? No, you didn't. However, there would be growth with industry brought here, and we have somebody working on that every single day with regard to the EDC and the space and the zoning. Thank you.
I'm going to bounce right off of Ms. Quincy. Uh, the EDC is already working on it, uh, I would reach out to, uh, Mr. Chauvin and go through Governor DeSantis, he is pushing hard now. The reason we're getting so much growth in Waukulla County, he is actually recruiting people, I don't know if y'all realize that, he is aggressively recruiting people to Florida. Um, and that's the reason we're getting a lot of growth, it's not just our county, it's, it's everywhere. But I would reach out through them, and I would also look into giving them breaks on coming into the county as far as land, things like that. I would love to see an emergency room come that would offer good jobs, good paying jobs. I think the county is already working on that, working on some other things with the medical services, but, uh, obviously the EDC is already working on it. Where I come from, in Tennessee, uh, there were a lot of jobs when I was a kid, we had factories on every corner, seemed like, and we had a Goodyear Tire and Rubber Company right down the road that deployed several thousand people, I mean, these kind of jobs are just wonderful to have, if you can get them. But we live in a county that has about a two percent unemployment rate. But we live in a county that has about a 2% unemployment rate. And that's a good problem to have, I think. But as far as attracting people that would come here and put a plan in, that might be, that might not be the greatest thing. So, yeah, I want jobs like everybody else, but I want to be realistic about what our possibilities are and how much energy we put into it. I'd like to put our energy into, into the, to the way of life here, to taking care of who's here and doing what we can to continue to make this a place where people want to live and raise families. I know that, I want, I want industry to come here, though, that will be a good neighbor. I think that's probably my priority. If somebody wants to locate an industry here, it's gotta be a good neighbor industry. It's gotta be somebody that respects our resources, it's gotta be somebody that respects our people. It's gotta be just a good neighbor. Yes, we want the jobs, we want the money, but first and foremost, we just want good neighbors. We want people that'll take care of us if they come here with their, with their business. And in all likelihood, if they locate up in that corner, which would be a good place to be, they'd be pulling a lot of their labor out of the county, of course. But we take the sales tax revenue, we take what revenue we can get from, we'd be glad to have it. So I think all of us are pro-industry in one way or another, but I sure want people that will be good neighbors myself. Thank you.
Okay, then the next one. What do you see as the biggest challenge to Waukesha County?
Oh, boy, is there only one? The biggest challenge for Waukesha County is, I think, making sure that we have jobs and houses here for our children. And whether that's a challenge for some, it's probably not okay that we, you know, our kids go to our wonderful school system and then they get out of school and then they go get jobs elsewhere. But as far as challenges go, I mean, I think we do a great job of figuring those out by working together. And I can't think of anything with regard to growth. My biggest challenge for this election is definitely protecting private property rights. And I think that's a challenge for all of us with regard to the way that things are right now. So that's it.
Our biggest challenge to come will be safety. As we grow and get more population, that's 319, four lanes, we, you know, as we get more people, we will get more crime. So one of our biggest challenges and one of the reasons people want to be here is safety. This is a safe, safe place to live. The other thing would be our schools, keeping our schools as A-plus schools, making sure we take care of our children. Like I said before, you know, it's, safety is one of the main reasons, schools, and, you know, making sure our children are taken care of.
Everybody needs a good challenge. And, and just the fact that you would want to serve on this county's commission makes you realize that there are a lot of challenges. There's more to this job than just sitting in a meeting a couple of times a month. And the people that elect you are electing you to have a voice. They're electing you to look over the issues and protect their interest. The challenge is, is taking care of the people that live here and the employees of this county. But within that challenge is protecting the environment, protecting the cost of living, the quality of life. And those things, that's our water, the preciousness of the water of this county is a challenge. We've got to stay on top of that to be sure that we don't go backwards, want to continue to. You know, people talk about going to the springs, and that was one of the first things we saw when we moved down here, when we started visiting here, was go to the springs. And the question is, why aren't the glass bottom boats running? Because the water's not clear enough yet. So we've got work to do there. And why is it that our library isn't where it should be? Well, because we're not collecting impact fees. You know, these are things, if you want to know what the challenges are, the challenges are to straighten this place out to a certain extent, and to start working for the people every time. I think that's, that's the challenge, and it can be met. Thank you.
All right, so as far as challenges go, so we're facing rapid growth. And with rapid growth, of course, you gotta be socially responsible, you gotta be in front of them to be responsible, you have to be socially responsible. And that's one of the reasons why I stepped up and ran in the first place was the social aspect of things. What I see around other counties and other places is that, right now, you take, I hate to call the counties out, Leon County, for example, right now they're fighting crime. Do you have, they have lost, well, I can say they have lost a generation of kids, a generation of beautiful individuals. And it's just one of the things, when you look back, you know, I'm a veteran, I love the guy. And you reach out, you want to grab the kids, you raise them in a way that they should go so they never fought for them. So when it comes to the social aspect of things, when it comes to youth, it is something that has to be grasped before it becomes a problem. When it becomes a problem, it's typically too late. Now, these, these cities are already looking and trying to put in 10 million here, 15 million there, to, to take care of a problem that should have been taken care of ahead of time. Our youth is something that we have to be cooperating about. And I believe that right now in this county, is a great time to grasp that. Our kids are amazing. As being a youth mentor and a, being a youth mentor and a motivational speaker, I run into a lot of different people. Our kids in this county are amazing. Not saying other kids are not, but our kids are at a level of respect that is something different, and you have to commend your parents and everybody in this county of that. So being able, is that my turn? So is the youth. So let's, let's grab the youth before it becomes a major challenge.
Next question. What are your goals in office and what do you see yourself being able to accomplish?
Well, my goals in office would be to, I've said it before, I'd love to see a new rec park up here in Crawfordville. I think me and Sam share that. A large rec park that would be good for the kids, where they can actually have tournaments, and it would have curb appeal to draw people. My second thing that I would like to see eventually is an emergency room, just like they have in Southwood here in Crawfordville. It will save lives. It will, it will definitely save people. And it will also help out with first responders in the county. Right now, if we get a Baker Act or anything else like that, they have to go all the way to Tallahassee. If you're having a heart attack or stroke, you gotta go all the way to Tallahassee. So if we could get an emergency room here, it would also provide good jobs as well, but it would definitely save lives. I just want to help Waukesha County. I want to keep, you know, my little motto is progress with a purpose. And I would like to see, see everything keep moving. Thank you.
It's always interesting when, when people want you to set a goal on something and you can see the mountain in front of you and you're not sure how you're gonna climb it, but you know you want to get to the top. So, so when you look, when you think about the county commission, their job is to have a little vision, to hope the county commission can see into the future enough to know what the needs are going to be further on down the road. But you want to continue to maintain, to maintain the things you have, you want to be a welcoming community. We're grateful for the safety that we have here. I mean, our law enforcement, in my opinion, is, is doing a super job. What I gather, crime rates are going down and they're solving more crimes, and it's just a safe place to live. As, as we know, there are other places around us that's harder to manage. But we, we happen to be in what's called rural county, and it's easy to manage. So a goal would be to keep this rural feel, to keep this country feel that I've grown up with and enjoyed where I lived in Tennessee, and I enjoyed living down in South Chappy, and it's just where we're neighbors, and we're down home. And see if you can preserve as much of that as you can with the growth that we've got to have. Property rights were mentioned, and absolutely people have the right to build, to sell their property and do those things. But at the same time, all that has to be managed to protect the people that live here. To be sure that there's not nobody, that we're not, the people that live here and employees of the county are being taken care of, that there's no unfair advantage in any of those things. So it is, you know, that's a goal, to keep things on a narrow and straight, and yet preserve what we have and grow at the same time. And it's a challenge. I can see that. I can see our, you know, people work hard at that here. And it is a challenge. Thank you.
Thank you. So, so far, can you, just for me real quick, repeat that question one more time.
Okay. What are your, what are your goals in office and what do you see yourself being able to accomplish?
So my goals in office is really to create infrastructure for youth and more programs. I want us to even flourish. I want to give them every possibility there is in order to become a more, a more productive individual in life, and to reach the goals they want to reach in life. Now, as far as a short-term goal, that would be unity. I think, I don't, I don't think that we are dysfunctional as a community. I think in some way we are disconnected when it comes to different programs. For instance, I think the team student should be speaking with the, the library. I think athletic programs should be in direct connections with the school to find a possible way of getting our youth up and out of this community or, they like to stay, let them stay, but to actually find their way, to helping them find their way in life. So that is my, that is my goal.
What's the second part of the question?
What do you see yourself being able to accomplish?
Okay, well, I'm gonna just go backwards and start with the second part of the question. What I see myself able to accomplish is to be the person that I am every single, this is kind of one of those things where I'm like, this is interesting to answer this question. So the goals that we have are pretty simple. They are to get an agenda, to study that agenda, and to do what is on that agenda with regard to coming in there on Mondays and making a decision. How I get to where I'm going with regard to any of those things is the same exact way. Remain successful and involved, know what's going on in the community, and more importantly, studying the agenda. Thank you.
Come on in. You got plenty of seats. Scared that this one was submitted, but I'll just take all that preamble out of it. What are your ideas for the, for the county budget? I don't know how much I need to say. It's a $200 million budget. Half of it is sewer projects. If, if you, if you're supporting the budget, do you have an idea for any budget cuts? And if so, what specific programs or areas would you cut? Is that convoluted?
Pretty much. Budget question, and do I have any areas that I've identified I'd like to cut? I worked for a guy in Tennessee, some years back, and we went through an economic downturn. And I don't mean maybe. It was, it was one of those where you're laying people off and things are tough. And I worked for him long enough to realize that a lot of times it's, it is what you can identify that you don't have to have, that, that makes you, makes your business or your operation better. Maybe it's we find something we don't have to have that doesn't cause taxes to raise or, or whatever. But he actually cut coffee out of the waiting room. And so, so I'm telling you that if you look hard enough and long enough, yeah, there are things that you can adjust and find. But at the same time, people have the expectation that when they pay taxes, when they live in this county, they want a quality of life, they want services, that, they have a lot of wants. I know we've got a commissioner sitting around the table that knows that. And, and I see, I see your commission by and large trying to meet that. But I also realize that, that if we had another income stream, it wouldn't be, we wouldn't be looking as hard to cut something either. And I keep going back to this because it just makes no sense to me that we don't have impact fees in this county. And why would you want to cut a budget that's already pretty pared down, as best I can tell? I don't see much fat in this budget. I've looked at it two or three times. And I see a few things I question, but I don't know that I'd call any of it fat. But I do see a need, as we say, our library and other things need some help. And yes, there is $58,000 in a blind item in the budget that's earmarked, it came from impact fees, and it's earmarked for the library. And we can't spend it because we're not adding on to the library. You've gotta use impact fees for what they're designated for, and those are waiting on the expansion of the library. And then they'll get spent. And those are the, that's, that's where I am on the budget. Why don't we have some more money from somewhere else? Because we need to do some more things. Thank you.
What are your ideas about the county budget? If you would reduce the budget, what specific program or areas would you cut?
So, so that's, that's a tough one. So in all actuality, just looking at the budget and reviewing the budget and looking over it, I think it's a pretty good budget and where they got it set now. Now, far as budget cuts, to be honest with you, I cannot identify an area at this time where I, that I, that I actually would cut. I would touch our services, any programs that we have. I think that is needed in our county. If anything, I would definitely, definitely look to upgrade those.
Are we really gonna talk about cutting the budget? Okay, just wanted to make sure. So anybody that's studied the budget and that knows the budget understands that, well, maybe not, but this is how I feel about it, is that public safety is the first thing that we have to worry about in our budget. And we can sugarcoat cutting the budget any way we want to with regard to the fluff. When I think about services that the county provides, obviously, it would be a tough decision for the county commission to have to figure out which of those programs are fluff and which are not. So I don't know if there is a specific program that you are looking for with regard to your question, but obviously, it would be programs.
I would have to study the budget more. Right now, over, over half of the budget is grants. The budget's a little over $200 million, and it's, it's grants, the majority of it is. I would have to study it more. And to say that I was going to cut something at this time, no, I would not cut anything. I would have to look at it. Obviously, your first responders, all of your emergency services are going to come first. But at this very time, I would have to study the budget more and do a thorough look at it, more than what I've done.
Next question. Some county facilities needs have been identified. The library is too small. A second rec park has been discussed for years. A new emergency operations center is needed. What priority do you give to construction of new county facilities?
What priority do I give to new county facilities? I mean, it is a priority. Now, we are going, we're going to ask the, rec parks are in need, libraries are in need, and that is a priority. I think we should get to it sooner than later. Those services, those services are amazing. The people that work in those offices are, at the rec parks are amazing as well, and they actually touch a lot of different people in so many different ways. And that's part of social responsibility. So, so I would definitely prioritize that as up there next to, make sure we, or we queue up with the right amount of, right amount of roads here in Waukesha.
You want me to prioritize what's the most important thing to me, an EOC, a library, or a rec park? Is that the question?
What, what is your, what prior, yeah, no, you don't have to write them, but what do you see, I mean, how big a priority are these things to?
Well, an EOC is obviously a huge priority, and we've gone through the legislature two times to get that, so that's a really big deal. The library, I spend an awful lot of time at, so, I mean, that's obviously a service that's a big deal, but to, and the rec park is a big deal, but the EOC is being worked on right now. So to me, that's the biggest priority. But to, and the rec park is a big deal, but the EOC is being worked on right now. So, to me, that's the biggest priority.
As Mr. Quincy said, EOC is gonna fall under Florida statute. That's things that you have to have. So, those are gonna be the things that you have to prioritize ahead of other things. And then whatever you have left over, you, you, you make those a priority. Uh, but it's, but it's, looking at it from, from the whole picture, you would have to prioritize the things that Florida statute and policies mandate that you have in order to serve the citizens of Walco County. And then you would follow up with, you know, with whatever funds you have left available to prioritize those.
So, if you have any money at all, you gotta, you gotta put it in services that people have to have, of course. But the things that we wanna have are the tough ones. As my brother always says, you gotta figure out the difference between wants and needs. And, and we have a lot of needs that we must meet. But a community is entitled to some wants. They pay their taxes, they, they live, uh, within the law, they, they work hard every day, and they're expecting us, as a county commission, they're expecting county commissions to do their job, to bring the goods and services to them, uh, that are within our power. And, and we, we, we can't take no for an answer. We're in a growing county. We wanna be sure that when people move here, and we wanna welcome people to come here, that five years from now, they wake up and they're glad they're here. And it takes effort to do those things. You know, we, that increases your property tax, but that doesn't always pay for expansion. You need things, other, another bucket to pay for things that we want. Yes, the library should already be under construction. The, uh, the rec park should be done. Yeah, these are things that if, had we started, had we not given up on another income source that we had years ago, we'd probably have well along on that. We might even be talking about swimming pool. I don't know. But it's, all things are possible. If you can figure out where the money's coming. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, this is, this is a perfect question for you.
That's scary.
The airport.
So, this is the perfect answer for everyone. I can't answer anything about it.
Can't answer? Uh, the question would be, do you think the county should operate the airport?
Well, I still can't answer anything about that right now. You wanna ask me another question that's, um, something about the airport? We're in...
How about a general question about the airport? Not the airport. Should a county have an airport? That's not, that's not in litigation.
Yes, there is. So, there is. But let's, let's switch to another question if I'm going first, unless you want them to answer that question.
Well, okay, growth.
That'd be real important.
What color growth? Uh, what, what do you, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
How, how do you, what color's moving with growth? How do you, how do you, how do you deal with all of this, uh, this influx of growth?
How do I deal with it? I got you. Um, so, everybody in here knows but doesn't want to listen to the way that growth is dealt with here. And it's more, um, one of those things that comp plan amendments come before us, and we obviously have to vote on those comp plan amendments. And then, once those things are done, then it moves on through the planning and zoning process to the state. So, dealing with growth here is quite simple. It is up to me to make a legal decision on any growth that is going to be approved in this county. Which one do you want to say? Switch from airport to growth.
Um, the growth in the county, uh, we're, we're a great county. We're growing. Uh, we're gonna continue to grow. There's, uh, there's three, uh, there's, there's three, uh, places being built at this time, three developments being built. There's five more that have been approved. Uh, I added that up. It's a little over 600 homes. Uh, so, growth is gonna continue to come. Anybody that says that it's not is, is wrong. It's gonna continue to come. Um, we just gotta manage that growth. We gotta manage it through best management practices. Um, and we've got to, uh, stay on top of it. Obviously, infrastructure is always brought up with growth. Uh, infrastructure always lags behind a little bit on the growth, but we just have to manage it. And we do that through best management practices. Obviously, uh, Commissioner, Professor Smith, she brought up that she has to vote on it. Well, the commissioners do have to vote on it. They have a town plan and a comp plan that they have to follow. And obviously, there's always amendments to it because things are always changing. So, you just have to follow up on it and use your best management practices to make sure everything stays in line.
Growth, we're not talking about, we're not talking about the airports. What was the question you gave? Growth. Growth. How do I feel about growth? Wow, well, I mean, if you live in Florida, you, you better get ready to handle growth. I mean, everybody wants to be here, including me and my wife. And, and we're glad to be here. The, uh, yes, yes, county commission is, is the last, is the last stop for deciding what gets done. It does, it does go through planning and zoning, and there's a lot of work before, before the county commission. But the words no and not now can be used too. Everything doesn't have to be just passed right along until, until it becomes what it should be. I see some things going on with development that, that are, uh, put in motion when they, maybe it's not quite ready. Uh, they're trying to put a development off of Trappelinger right now, and, and I was walking in the neighborhood of Trappelinger just a few weeks ago, and I can tell you that road doesn't need any more traffic on it. And I'm not a traffic expert, but I was trying to walk around. I tell you, they're getting run over. And so are the residents walking their dogs and having a good time in the afternoon. And we're talking about adding several hundred houses on the end of that road, and there's no, there's no way that's gonna work. So, yes, growth is, is necessary, but growth can, the buck stops at the county commission on these things. They have the ability to say yes, no, maybe, or not now. And I think what I find, walking around and talking to people, is there's a lack of that going on. And I have a tendency to agree with it. I think we can, we can make, make other decisions there. Uh, you know, developers need to make a living. God bless them. I want them to. We need more homes in this county. Amen. But we don't need homes if people move into it and then they wonder why they can't get out to the street, and the other people are wondering why they can't get out as well. Uh, we need to take care of everybody. And, and developers can come back when they have it fixed. If we approve it then. That's, I, I don't think it's rocket science. I think you just need to take care of everybody like they're your neighbor. And if you don't want it coming in next to you, then why are you allowing it coming in next to somebody else? Seems fairly simple sometimes, but maybe I'm just ain't got it figured out yet. Thank you.
Can you repeat the question? Growth, how, how do you feel about it? How do you deal with it?
How do I feel about it? How do I deal with it? Like I said, being a good generation here, oh, my, have you grown? Uh, I remember the time when it was just one stoplight. There are several now. And so, when it actually comes to growth, uh, the things that I always identify is make sure that we stay fiscal, responsible, back to the environment, and that social responsibility all work hand in hand. All right? So, uh, in, in our county, man, you gotta kind of realize, right? So, our school systems are amazing. But more than any of that, it, more than any of that is the actual people that are here that makes this community safe. So, we definitely always have to include the people in the way that we grow. That, that, that was boiled down to the company, history plan, the town plan, the people came together, um, and, and had a vision on the way that we, that, excuse me, the way that they, and we wanted to grow. So, when it comes to the county commissioners, uh, make it come, make it come to history plan changes, it, it should always involve the people that made the town plan and the company history plan itself. So, um, that's pretty much it. I think we should grow, and the way that we should grow should be according to the people, not any special interest group, or it's soon enough that my interest. So, thank you.
What do you feel are your qualifications for office?
Well, my qualifications, um, I'm e, I'm very eager, ready to work. I, uh, easy to get a hold of. Uh, I've served this community, like I say, for the past 20 something years. Just, uh, and love Walco County. Love Walco County, care about Walco County, care about the citizens of Walco County.
That, that's the good thing about, uh, will it work there? We all learn, help me out. The good, the, that's a good thing about living in a rural county. And, and the commonality of this whole panel up here is that we do care about the county. I don't think there's any question about that. We all care about the county. Do we have other i, have ideas about it? Sure. We all have our own ideas about it. That's why they have elections. That's why people make choices. I, I know, I know I'm qualified, uh, because of all the work I've done to get to this point. I've, I've dealt with people my entire life. I was, uh, I was in a house, uh, I don't know, it, it, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't the kind of house that my dad grew up in without running water, and an outhouse, but I grew up in a house that had indoor plumbing, but there was, it was pretty small, and I had five brothers and sisters. And they were all younger than me, and so I became a manager at early age. You was in charge. And, and that's, I, you can't help how you're imprinted sometimes, and so my whole life has been one of being in management, being a leader, trying to, trying to figure out, do problem solving. But, but one of the things I learned real late in life, too late in life, but not so late that it didn't help me, was people don't care what you know till they know that you care. And I think that's what qualifies me more than anything. I care. And I like to listen. Listen twice, cut once. And, and when you're listening to the people that live here, and you're listening to all their concerns, and you're looking for solutions, I think that's what being a, a county commissioner is all about. It's taking care of the people that live here and the county employees. And it, and it starts with wanting to do it, and having enough leadership experience in the, in your pocket, and enough management experience to help, and, and listen. Listen, and that, a lot of times, they'll give you the solutions. We were, uh, we, sidebar, how much time I got?
Like, you're done.
Uh, can you repeat that question? What do you feel are your qualifications for office?
Okay, so, qualification for office, uh, so, being a county commissioner, I think, uh, a person should always have integrity, leadership skills, uh, and, and business skills as well. Me, myself, I've been a business owner now for 11 years. I operated several different businesses, created several different programs, and dealt with several different budgets. Nothing major as what we have with the county, but especially small budgets. What you learn in small budgets is the fact that you don't got time to make mistakes. You cannot make mistakes. A, a small mistake could cost you your company. A small mistake, uh, as a nonprofit organization, would diminish your ability to actually forge your service onto the people that it was intended for. So, far as my qualifications, I've been through those situations. So, when it comes to the business side of things, that's what I do. When it comes to the leadership side of things, I have been a, uh, I, I've been pretty much in a leadership role regardless of where I'm at in life, whether it was from a, a captain of football teams, from Florida State University, whereas in my church, it's been, uh, elected to be a deacon. I stay in leadership roles, and that's kind of where, I, I, sometimes I ask myself, why am I always in leadership roles? But I, I, it's a characteristic, so, yes, that's my qualifications.
My qualification for being in office is that I have the knowledge and power to remind people that we are surrounded by almost 70% of local, state, and federal parks. And so, where there is a misconception about growth, impact fees, why we aren't doing what we're doing, all of those things, I have studied that, and I usually have an answer, and if I don't have one, I can get one. Thank you.
Um, meeting time. Some people have suggested that 5:00 PM start time for county commission meetings is too early for some people who work in Tallahassee and are coming and want to attend the meeting. What is your opinion?
I've been going to meetings for a lot of my life. And they're necessary, I wouldn't say evil, but they're a necessary part of, uh, making things happen. You gotta have meetings. And when you're having public meetings, they gotta be, there's gotta be some transparency. There's gotta be an ability to get to the meeting. Uh, the meeting's gotta be accessible. It's gotta be posted a lot so people know what's going on. And there may be ways to improve in all of those areas. I know that our meetings possibly aren't as, as interactive as they could be. Maybe you should be able to call in on cell phone and participate. I know the meetings are a little bit hard to find. When you wanna find one, uh, on the county's website, they're a little difficult to run down. Uh, so, I think there's room to, to improve those areas. Now, as far as the meeting time goes, as far as I'm concerned, I don't care if we meet at 4:00 in the morning, if that's what the citizens want to do. But is that practical? Is that, is that what we need to meet? I, I don't know. But, you know, we can survey the community and see when they'd like to have meetings. But we have county employees that go to that meeting. What, six or seven at every meeting?
How many times have you been? About six or seven?
Yeah, at least.
The whole audience, almost, is county employees.
So, there are a lot of county employees, and most of them are required to be there.
You answered the question.
Yeah, so, so what I'm, I am answering the question. I'm getting information like I do from anywhere I can. So, so we do have county employees that come to meeting, and I'm concerned about their schedules. I mean, they work a full day, and then we want them to stay over two, three hours. So, so all this has to be weighed. But I, I'm in favor of being open to changing meeting times. I just need to do some more studying on it. I think we need to get some feedback from the public, see when it would come. And, and try, try a new meeting time for six months or so and see if it really attracts everybody like we want it to. Uh, it, it's, but there needs to be more access. It needs to be more transparent. There are things we can do to prove it, no doubt. Thank you.
Far as meeting time goes, I truly believe it's, it's, it's pretty straightforward. It's whatever time the people want. As a county commissioner, you're led by the people. It's for the people. Meeting time should be set according to the people. If it's 6:00, if it's 7:00, if it's 8:00, and that's what people want, then let's get it there. People would like to be involved. I like the fact that more people want to be involved. So, I will always do whatever it is, whatever it takes. I, I just, like, kinda like June said, wanna have it at 4:00 in the morning, 12:00 at night, that's, that's fine with me. But the biggest thing is people need to be notified, and people need to be a part of the government. So, I definitely, or I definitely am in favor of later meeting time. At that, when I'm looking at myself, I, I work for a living. So, when I'm getting off of work, we sometimes, when we back up, I, I probably work a little bit too much. So, so whenever I actually do get off, uh, at the same time the meetings are starting, I, I'm half the time unable to get there. What's great about it is, I, I must throw this in there, one thing that the county did do that I absolutely agree with is the fact that they have it to the point where it's visible on Facebook. So, that helps out a lot. But at the same time, that still doesn't allow reports, actually, force to be heard. So, I am in favor of, I mean, later meeting time.
So, we get, uh, this question asked only during a campaign cycle. Um, the time that 5:00 meeting starts, um, nobody has specifically said anything to me about not being able to be involved because of their work schedule, and if that's something, you know, that the citizens want, well, with regard to that, I feel like they would definitely ask us if we could do it later. Planning and zoning starts at this time, which is 6:00. Code enforcement starts at this time, which is 6:00. But there is a, something that has to come with regard to the employees staying there, and also, the commission meetings being transparent and publicly noticed, those are done every two weeks. So, you know, you would have to do your homework to see if you wanted to make the time to come to the meeting. Like I said, usually in the meetings, the majority of the meetings is staff. So, I mean, it's a big lift for them. You know, you make time for a doctor's appointment. If you see something on the agenda, change your schedule. Thank you.
I don't, I don't have any problem with changing the time. I think we need to reach out to the citizens and let them decide what time they would like for us to have the meeting. The meetings are, I encourage everyone to come to the meetings. But as Ms. Professor Smith said, there's, very rare do you get a big crowd in the meeting. Unless it's a large, uh, a large event coming up or something that is really gotten on everybody's heart and everybody wants to know about.
Well, we've been through all these questions, basically. So, now it's time for closing. Can we give them three minutes to close?
Yes. Yes.
So if people want to go all into stories or whatever. Okay, you're closing?
I'm not closing. My closing is simply this. This community, like I, like I stated before, is absolutely amazing. At this point in time, where our community is, I believe my skill set was needed. That's why I really kind of stepped out and decided to even take the leap to become an county commissioner. And that skill set is really evolved around our youth. I keep repeating myself over again, but, but actually, we gotta reach to the youth before it's, before it's way too late. Our county is growing, there's a lot of people coming in, and we gotta ensure the fact that we have the infrastructure necessary to support not only the people, but the youth as well. So that's the reason why I'm here. I'm easily to be reached. If you ever want to reach out to me, either by Facebook, Instagram, and at the same time, you know, I, I am big on environment. Our environment is amazing to me. We have Walco Springs, which is one of the best springs I have actually been to, and I have been to several of. It needs to be protected. It must be protected. There are things that are going, that come before the county commissioner. If you think about it, it's like a gas station issue. Things like that, when it comes to me, will never pass. For when it comes to the chemicals and gas station over the cave, I, I'm really not understanding why that is even an issue. It's threatening to our community, to our, to our water, which is also a way of life. So that's why I'm here. I would definitely appreciate your vote. Once again, if you have any extra questions to reach out to me, I'm easily reachable by Facebook.
Thank you. So in closing, the first thing is, obviously, I thank you for your support and humbly ask for your vote. It's important for me to mention that the county commission has been doing, these were three things that I noted, which were pretty, a pretty big deal to me. The conversion of septic tanks to sewer, the purchase of the golf course, which is going to be another recreation facility, and the home course for our high schools, and is also being treated with the highest ADVT standards. And the reopening of Woolley Park from Hurricane Michael, and the rebuilding of its fishing pier. So in closing, I will just say that I will continue being me, I will continue working for you every single day, and I look forward to November 9th. Thank you.
Well, once again, I'd like to thank everybody for coming. I just, I care about Walco County. I care about our kids. I want to see our county thrive as it's been thriving. I wish that you will come out and vote. God bless America and God bless Walco County.
Sometimes it's, you don't really know where to start because there's so much going on. Campaign isn't never something that I dreamed of doing. It was never on my bucket list. It was, it was not in my wheelhouse, but I've enjoyed it. It's, it's, it's been really enlightening, I guess. It's been really energizing to get out and meet new people, to, to walk in neighborhoods and getting, get a feel for where people live, and get a feel for their concerns. The first, first, I don't know, few weeks that I walked neighborhoods, I really didn't have a platform that I wanted to talk about because I was really interested in what people's concerns were. And so it's, it's almost like I'd ask you to take a few moments and just envision, what is you love about this county? You know, put a picture in your mind of, of what really, what's really important to you living here, and what would you want to preserve and even make better? And I'll just give you a few moments to think about that. So, so things come to mind, and I don't have to, I don't have to guess for you. I know you envision the springs maybe, or where you, where you live, or the neighborhood you live in. Maybe you're thinking about going to the library and looking at the chickens. We, we just have a great place to live, and it's got, it's unique, it's got, it's got so many things that, that we need to cherish and watch after, and yet, at the same time, yes, we've gotta, we've gotta go forward with it, with our history. We gotta go forward in time. We've gotta add on for the people that are coming here. We gotta, we gotta do things that, that our youth grow up well, enjoying, and the rest of us get to enjoy as we retire here or whatever. And, and so it's, I just feel the weight of that, but I feel the challenge of it and the excitement of it, too. And I'm just really grateful that there are people gathered around me, support me, and that I've gotten a ton of support out in the community. People are just excited that folks want to run, they're excited that maybe there's a few new ideas out there, and I just appreciate it for being here and getting this opportunity. And, and I hope that you'll see fit to put me in office. Thank you.
That will conclude. Thank you all for coming this evening. Thank you to Rachel, who was the timekeeper. Rachel Pientz, thanks to Robert Seider.
We're not going to get to ask any, we're not going to make any statements or anything to these people.
You can talk to them after.
Afterwards? You can't talk to them all at one time?
No.
Okay.
And thank you all for, for running for office. I see the judicial candidates are still here. Thank you all for running. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.